And welcome to the June twenty-fourth Tuolton City Council work session. We have a few items on the agenda tonight, leading off with the Tuolton Urban Renewal Education Series, Part Two. So Jonathan and Elaine?
The rare exception, Part Two's gonna be better than the original.
More riveting.
One sequel's ever won an Oscar. Visit that.
So, good evening, Council. Tonight is Session Two. This is going to be a discussion on the fundamentals of the rule, the history and projects of the Tuolton Development Commission. And Tuoltons, you are a district. And I will let, we'll let Elaine take it from here on the Session Two components.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So, the things we are going to talk about are our first, there is the rule of the Tuolton Development Commission. And regarding that, the Tuolton Central Urban Renewal District, the Levitton Tax Incentive District, and then what the next steps of this process are going to be. So, the Tuolton Development Commission is a totally separate entity from the Tuolton City Council, even though you are made up of the same people. So, it has its own financial auditing requirements, its own budget requirements, its own setup, start the meeting, end the meeting, its own minutes, so it's a total separate entity. A lot of times, and I think the way you work is that meeting occurs on the same night as your city council, because you are the same group, so in a sense, if you don't have too full of the city council meeting to go ahead and have your development commission meeting to act on the same meeting as your city council meeting. So, role of the Tuolton Development Commission is to carry out projects in the urban renewal area. As the statute defines, the agency there is supposed to do everything that relates to your urban renewal area. The Development Commission may do amendments to your existing urban renewal plans that are minor amendments. Substantial amendments to urban renewal plans, and those are defined in particular, have to be carried out by the City Council. Those who may not be implemented by the Development Commission, they are implemented by the City Council upon recommendation of the Development Commission. So, they recommend that they review that amendment, move forward in the process, build actually the proposal. Especially since you are the same body as the City Council, that would be really important to vote on it here and then to take it through the process. So, they don't vote on it, they review it, say, move it forward in the public process. And they plan for the future. The statute is written so that any new urban renewal plans are actually presented and planned by the agency, started by the agency. So, the City Council can direct the agency to start looking at a new urban renewal area or renovation plans, but the actual planning is taken forward by the agencies that are subject of the Tuolton Development Commission. Any questions on that? We talked about, a little bit, I think, at the last meeting, was really briefly the state limitations on urban renewal for populations under fifty thousand. You may have up to twenty-five percent of the total assessed value of a property in the city of urban renewal, and up to twenty-five percent of the total city acreage. And we'll have a chart on the next slide that shows you where you are in terms of degrees. An existing plan may not be increased by more than twenty percent of its urban renewal acreage. And that's important, because sometimes I'm working with cities and they say, "We want to initially set up this urban renewal area, but we think we want to add this other acreage." And to be able to know if you can add that other acreage, you have to know whether it could set twenty percent of the requirement. That is not offset by reductions in that original area. So, if you have a one hundred acre area, you may add up to twenty acres. It doesn't matter if you've taken that area down from a twenty acre area, you still may only add that original twenty acres. So, there's no offsets there. The maximum indebtedness, which remember is that now that you may spend on projects, programs, and administration over the lack of the plan, may be increased by twenty percent of the original maximum indebtedness, as increased by the inflation rate used adopting the original urban renewal plan. Since on both of your urban renewal plans, you quit taking your tax increment and set the future maximum indebtedness, that doesn't apply in the, you mean not in the tax reasons as opposed to if you're done with that. If you adopted a new area in the future, as again you're setting your original limitations, you want to keep in mind that that is what the limitation is for the businesses. So, how that impacts you at this point, your city has five thousand two hundred and sixty-four acres, and twenty-five percent of that would be one thousand three hundred and sixteen. Your central area has three hundred and twenty-six acres, and the Levitton area, three hundred and eighty-two. So, you right now have thirteen point four four percent of urban renewal. You may say, "But we're not taking tax increment anymore." I had a real opinion just recently on that, in the Happy Valley, and it said, "It doesn't matter whether or not you're thinking of it, if you're still spending money in the urban renewal area and you haven't closed out that plan, it counts against your city total acreage." And that assessed value, that isn't true, because you're not taking the tax increment. So, there, that value is to protect the city and other tax and jurisdictions from taking too much tax into it. So, the area that you need to be cognizant of and forward is just staying in that twenty-five percent of your total acreage. And I think we figured out that that was around six hundred and eight, or six hundred and eight additional acres that you could put into urban renewal without having closed out. This is going very fast here.
Yep.
I've been asking many questions. Questions so far?
Questions. Robert.
Thanks. We'll work backwards from your most recent statement. Can use existing district funds to plan for a new district? So, for example, if the three million dollars that's in the Levitton Fund, if we were thinking about a new urban renewal district, we could use those funds, potentially, with opinion of a legal counsel that that's a permissible use.
I don't think you can use them if it is money that has not been yet used as debt and interest rates. If you have money in that fund that you've never, you collected, encountered it, as I said, might go against your maximum indebtedness, but it's never been spent against maximum indebtedness. I'm not sure that you can use that. I know you can use sale of property program income, money that's gone through your system and come back out through a transfer. So, if we got to the point of wanting to know that for sure, we would contact an attorney to review that and make sure that which of that money we could use and how much.
Okay. Second question. You mentioned needing to amend the plan in order to spend some of the money that's currently there, and I'll just take this occurred plan right now.
Only if you're going to do new projects that aren't listed in the plan.
Okay. So, with respect to our central district, there's a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars or so. Are there projects in that plan today that we could spend that hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars on?
Well, it depends. So, there is a tenant facade improvement program that's listed in the plan that we could potentially use. There is, but it's very limited what's in the plan. So, there's no outstanding big projects, I think, is the reason for the shaking of the head.
So, for example, we've talked about signage around the Lake at the Commons to draw more interest in there. Those funds, is that project existing, or would we have to amend the plan to?
I think that's a new project.
Okay.
And a minor amendment's easy.
Okay.
To do, it's just a resolution by this, the group that you will be in a couple of minutes.
Gotcha.
By the Development Commission. You add a project, you define the project, adds to the plan, you define how much money you want to add to it. So, those are relatively easy, but you do have, you cannot spend money on something that's not in the plan, and I don't think that's any reason.
I think because to Sherwin's point, it's in the use, because it's just pedestrian improvements. And so, I think we would have to confer with Elaine for sure.
Well, we can get in those weeds if and when necessary.
And on those things, if it's not entirely included in the plan, I always like to just have.
Amendment.
Do the minor amendment, and make it really clear so that there's no confusion and everybody knows.
CYA approach.
But signage, for instance, was in the original, it was in the plan because of the Commons, and so I don't think that was ever taken out, so, but we could get into those details and get an assessment from our city attorney. But the plan is kind of broad and high level, although there are some specific projects.
Okay. Bit of a more creative question. So, if we decided to amend the plan, find a project, spend that money, shut down the district, is there anything that prevents us from opening a new urban renewal district, at least on some of the footprint of the old one? Is there any double counting, or any kind of legal?
That's a great question. And a lot of, I get that question a lot, because sometimes you close down a district because you've finished that and you want to put that back on the tax rules, or you want to finish that, but there are certain parts of that district you want in a new district. And any urban renewal area, if it's been in an urban renewal area, it can go in another area, it just can't be into areas of this.
Okay. And then final question, with respect to areas that are within our planning authority, but not within city limits today, say, for example, Basalt Creek, if we had the idea that we wanted to do an urban renewal district down there, is it a requirement that the city be within, or the property be within the city on the day the plan is adopted? Or can it be prospective to say, "This will be annexed in the next couple of years and to ..."
Is it in the book, Andy?
Yes.
I've done plans like that. Whenever you have probably this outside of the city limits, the county also has to approve the plan.
Okay.
So, they don't just get briefed on it, they have to vote on it and approve it. And I've had counties vote on and approve. Washington County did for the Coffee Creek area in Lewisville, because I thought that area was unincorporated, so Washington County also had to vote on that plan. And I think Washington County also voted on that area. So, and Washington County has been very supportive of urban renewal areas generally. So, you may plan for an area outside of the city limits, there's just that other description that you have to bear in mind.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
A follow-up to Council Kellogg's question. So, if you remove, if you want to add an area that's already currently in an existing area, do you have to terminate the entire area, or can you carve out that area and leave the other second part open?
You could just carve out that area.
Other questions?
I just got a few. So, dovetailing what Robert was saying, so, I'm just spitballing here. So, the hundred and twenty-three that's left in the central area, we could, if we amended it and was approved, you could take some of that money possibly to fund the Nyberg Improvements, Nixter Fred Meyer, and take, so say you threw some money into that, and we could save that money on Tuolton moving forward and bank that somehow? Basically, move the money from one category to another, as long as we amended the?
Let me make sure I'm understanding.
Because of the traffic improvement.
It's capital equipment. It's within the district. So, you would just do an amendment to the plan and allocate some funding to a project. It's not a project you've already done, it's a project to be done.
Right.
Yes, you could do that.
I'm just thinking, that way we can set aside more funds, and moving Tuolton forward, more projects get done, just my idea. Don't know if it sticks. Can you do, on the Levitton area, can you purchase property, can you purchase land with that money? All right. Because we had a gentleman come last council meeting, and we've always been talking about a park around possibly Hundred Twenty-Fourth and Ninety-Nine, and he happened to mention that they're going to sell that property. So, it'd be kind of interesting to buy that property and work with Trimate. Can the funds be used, the three cities that align on Ninety-Nine right now are talking about doing a corridor study. Could you use money like that to help fund a corridor study with other cities to get grant money, matching funds?
Is the corridor study within the urban renewal area?
It would be on Ninety-Nine W, in the Levitton area.
Is it right, Jason?
Right, Jason.
You would have, you can't.
Is that too close?
You can't spend urban renewal money unless it's within the urban renewal area.
So, the borderline is Ninety-Nine W, is that, is that within the area? If it's on?
Yeah. So, the other question then would be, it looks like the border is on this side, the way this map's drawn.
Okay.
Who knows with this map?
Okay.
So, that then goes back to your other question. If you would want to look at your assets here, and if you close down that area, can all of the money from those assets going to be transferred to the city as assets, or to the agency to be used for other projects? Or is there a requirement that those assets be used within that urban renewal area? So, sometimes property is transferred to the city, and then the city has that asset. So, once the city has that asset, and it sells, then that money would be available. So, I think we're going to have a big talk about this.
Yeah.
In the next session, and I think probably before we do that, it would be great for me to sit down.
Yeah, I mean, you don't need an answer tonight.
Have them give us a little matrix of, if this, then the money goes here.
Right.
If this, then the money goes here, because that would just help us know.
Right. What's in, what's out.
Right. If you shut this down, that whole three point seven, you transfer his assets to the city.
Right.
And then if so, you could put that money outside. And for your staff to do a little more research on where that money came from, so we have a better idea of what we have towards where.
Okay. And then, you've never mentioned, is there any time limit? So, now that these two urban renewal areas are closed, can they just sit forever? There's no statute limitations in how, all right. So, we, I think, came up during our budget sessions, that, you know, at a certain point, the cost of maintaining an urban renewal zone has diminishing returns, we're spending more money on audits and financial returns. So, usually, how long have you seen, on an average, other projects, you know, similar to this, in different cities, how long have urban renewal areas stayed open until it made financial sense to wrap it up, because they were costing too much, too more, more than they were worth to keep open?
I think the only area that I know of, only city, that has kept an urban renewal area open, like you have, is the city board. Because they have some districts that they quit taking the tax increment proceeds, but they have loan income or other income, and they're spending that within the city.
So, they have operating income they're making out of it versus ours, which is pretty much stagnant.
Right. Right. So, typically, if you quit taking tax increment proceeds and you reach your maximum indebtedness, most agencies I've worked with, within a year or so, end up taking it. Which is, you know, especially at this point, my advice to you would be fish or cup bait.
Right.
Figure out what you're going to do, get a program going, and do it. Either shut them down or figure out projects.
Yep. That's where I was going. Thank you. All right. Other questions? Thank you.
Well, so, next steps. Yes. Yeah.
All right.
Another meeting. So, we have a meeting at the end of July to talk more specifically about this, and we'll be prepared with an idea of that matrix of what you have and what can be done, in what ways. So, then you can talk about, what should you do with those two areas? Should you amend them? Should you spend that money? Should you close them down? And what happens to that money when you close them down? So, we'll be prepared, so that you'll know some facts going into that. So, you should think about, in the downtown area, what you think is reasonable if you decided you wanted to spend that money, what's a reasonable thing to spend it on. And in the Levitton area, to also think about, are there projects within that area that makes sense to do? And I was talking with staff last Friday, usually, when I sit down with folks in that, you look first at your master plans and say, "Are there master plan projects within this area that need to be done, that we could use this money to spend on that instead of using other city general plan or whatever?"
Right.
Or to spend on those projects. So, that's a really good place to begin, is putting master plan projects in cities that are going to be. And then also, potentially to talk with some of the other, some of the property owners in that area and say, "Are there things within this area that need to be done that we should know about?"
Makes sense to me, yeah.
And then we would plan on a fourth meeting, probably after the Tuolton 2040 work is, those policy areas are done. I'm not describing it right, but, so that, and the priorities, so that you guys will have had a discussion about, like, what's next, in terms of those policies, and then what would urban renewal could potential, what could urban renewal potentially do for us in terms of funding those priorities, or being a funding source for those priorities? But that fourth meeting probably wouldn't be appropriate until after the Tuolton 2040 work is at a conclusion this fall.
In that meeting, I was saying, I like those kinds of meetings to be a little less formal, because I like people to brainstorm a little bit and think about, well, what are some uses? What can we do? What could we accomplish? How could we use this tool? That doesn't mean you've made decisions to use it, but it at least gives you the discussion of what are the potential things, and then to say, "Well, yes, let's spend some money there." "No, that doesn't make sense, we have other money," whatever. So, a little less formal than this, where we, you know, maybe sit around a table together and have a whiteboard, and brainstorm a little bit, and talk about what great things you're about to see happen, that go along with the green board.
Okay. Great.
Yeah, we were thinking we could do that, kind of like the budget workshop, or maybe over at the library, or the police department, where we're around a table and can have more informal discussions.
All right. Sounds terrific. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, and thanks for going and everybody helping put together the information for this, and we'll get you prepared for this.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is streetlight ownership and maintenance. Welcome Jeff and Nick. Good to see you.
All right, so good evening, uh, scenario. So we're here tonight to talk about options for our streetlights. So make some interest through working with PGE for a while. Walk us through some ownership options, a little bit of education on just what the different types of streetlights are, what the different ownership options are, and what staff recommendations. Just keep saying next slide. But I, I know my job, I get it. So brief overview of what we'll discuss this evening. I'd like to start off with just a high-level introduction, difference between LED lighting and HPS lights, so always in the same terminology, understanding of that currently. We'll move into our current status in the city, what our lights look like, warmth and, and what the status currently, and then the option that PG has for us for ownership and maintenance and conversion of these lights. Then we'll move into our recommendation, and then some discussion. The difference between high-pressure sodium and LED light mini diode lights.
Which is super medium size, that's like an HPS.
So HPS lights, high-pressure sodium, used to be the industry standard, they use more energy, they are less visible than LED lights, the light that they send out is less quality, a little more scattered. You know, you can say quality of light or direction, like I'm thinking like, an LED. People are used to them, they've had them as standards for many years, and more comfortable with the color of light and type of field they're looking at in the streets and neighborhoods. Uh, but one important thing to note is manufacturers are no longer producing parts for these lights, so we have a shortage related to, to the good service, and so it remains a bit. LED lights, the current industry standard, since you know LED was in the nineteen seventies, they have more what you see around today, a way to find them stores and, and many other facilities. PG recently changed their standards, previously the light standards that they had in place were a little bit harsher, a little bit more white, because a lot of criticism of other urban areas, they've reduced that color section down now, so it's closer to HPS, it's a little bit more... These lights are very energy efficient, not a lot of energy wasted, the, the lighting is high-quality, so like we discussed earlier, a lot more directional focused, you have more visibility where you want it to go, and not in all the other directions around it. And because of that reason, they're done with staff running, so not a lot of backlighting, focused down on the street. Or ownership options available, so as I said, PG has three options. High-level version of this is option A, PG owns and maintains the lights and poles. Option B, the city owns the lights and poles, and PG provides the regular maintenance on those assets. And option C is where the city owns and maintains the lights and poles.
And then one important note, there was a ton of, a ton more detail in your staff report, kind of related to the different options. Um, so you could really dig into the weeds, and I think it's fairly complicated, we tried to simplify it, uh, first and then second.
Focus on the high-level application, if you have questions.
So this is a very high-level, simplistic version of what is in your standard.
Simplistic, succinct.
There you go, succinct, yes.
That's better.
Seeing that is why I'm not a city attorney.
So where are we at today? Um, currently, we have some LED lights around town, as I said, we can't really get parts from them anymore, so as they fail, we have been converting to LED on a seasonal basis, but not corrective ways, so. Most of them are HPS, eighty-seven percent of our lights, we can't, are, um, option B, HPS, which is what we have everywhere. Um, and under option B, we own the lights and poles, PG provides regular routine, routine maintenance to them. So any how you did the bulb changes, or repairs, they'll do the replacement of those assets, and installation of the assets is still the city's responsibility, because of those items.
So, oh, so we put three dollars in there, because that's, for us, it's a fairly big upfront cost. You know, we have to, if somebody has a pole, or we have to replace a pole, or if the light burns out, we have to replace a light, because it's a big, fairly expensive.
Couple thousand dollars a piece, and we've seen our pole replacement, our budget increase greatly over the years, as our assets age, jumped this year to even a hundred thousand dollars, just for that part of the volume, so. It has become a little bit, and you just see on the, on the right side there, the city owns, so the, the numbers in red there are what we need to convert, it's kind of what the looming problem is. There's generally a kind of ratio, currently we have twenty-five hundred HPS lights, six LED lights, that's a hundred square foot. We do have the six hundred thirty-five wood poles, which are all about the same age, family from the nineteen seventies. And generally, the poles are high-profile by the way.
And then one of the, if we're gonna talk about a time, you come on this slide, you see underground piece. So what we see above ground are poles and lights, and then underground are all the cables or some goods. So that weighs a bit, it's a similar experience.
So why change, and why now? Bit of a two-part question. So the why change, HPS is going away, we have to force them to cover this one, because you have the cost of getting parts for it, it's very expensive to maintain, so we have to look for an alternative option. Um, additionally, we have a number of poles and lights that are failing, so it's kind of a process to reevaluate our situation, how we're gonna handle all these assets as they fail. As I said, six hundred thirty-five wood poles, all about forty years old, that's over their expected lifespan, so they're failing, increasing numbers as even as long as they get it to. The cost of repair of those is one point two seven million, it's an estimate we received in the beginning. And additionally, we have the twenty-five hundred, almost twenty-six hundred HPS lights, which we are no longer able to support. We did an estimate of place for from PG, a one point four five, to convert those lights to...
Kind of wood poles, we had, uh, every year we have a few just fall down, just from the way, you know, if you were...
This, we actually have a few less than this number, because we replace things since I've heard that a quarter is winsome.
And not very big concerns about, so forty-year-old wood poles, uh, definitely would, would feel a bit worried about that, which is how much we're gonna have to replace soon.
All right. And why now? Uh, as we said, the poles and lights are starting to fail more frequently, so the conversation has occurred much more often than ever. Uh, PG has worked with cities to provide better options, originally the LED options were not as enticing for us. The, as I said before, the, the intensity or the warmth of the lighting has changed now, so it's more similar to HPS, it's less, less white, and it's more of that orange, uh, feel, so we need to external what we have better. And as well, LED, uh, LED options have been improved, so now we do find some of our decorative lighting styles improved and provided through PG, so Tommy Country is one example, but they have a number of them that are, um, like what we currently have, but they can put in place, just in how they can fix your, some minor changes for Tommy with that. Staff recommendation. So we recommend that we change all of our lights and poles to option A, which PG purchases three lights and poles from the city. It's an estimated one point six million, there's some, um, some more logistics behind the scenes before that number is completely finalized, but that was a result estimate, I was able to get from the team's staff. And, uh, once they purchase those lights, they then can probably sponsor for the maintenance, ownership of those lights, so they would pay the two point seven two million dollars to upgrade these assets, or to the family with poles, and then LED, or HPS lights to LED, and then, uh, again, we may make some replacements in the future. And the outcomes of the option A recommendation, PG buys and becomes responsible for all the poles in our city, so we have a, it's all my fault, we, we need capital, and we should replace these one assets. The, uh, proceeds, the one point six million, would help cover our increased budget. The option A is a little bit more expensive on the monthly app, we pay a little more upfront, it'll cover the cost of those assets over the life of them. That one point six million could help cover us for about twenty-one years to offset that budget increase. But we would have a slight budget increase annually of about sixty-five thousand dollars, and we would achieve more of a burden of, sort of...
And I think really critically important is you wouldn't have the upfront capital cost. So, so coming up with, uh, two point, two point seven nine dollars, and sort of catering to upfront improvements that are needed fairly soon, um, would be, be pretty challenging. So, just, I guess to clarify a little bit to you, we always pay, ultimately pay revenues of our poles, of our lights, through PG. We just essentially amortize that over the life of the program, except we offset our upfront costs, and we have, you know, we pay a slightly higher fee for a long time, um, but really coming up with that upfront capital is, is really what counts for this. So we would get out of the lighting, streetlight business in this, in this scenario, and just work with PG as a partner.
And it would probably be important to cover our effects on small cell attachments, since that was a recent discussion that we had with you. Basically, everything that we've adopted back in December would remain the same. The attachment fee would still be applicable, the design standard would still be applicable, so PG would uphold, um, all the work that we've done up to this point. We would still maintain and control standards, uh, in the study some of those items, we would still permit the items. The, uh, only thing that Jay would change would be, PG would be allowed to charge a piece for a lot of expenses, in addition to our attention, which they currently give a small, a minority of options.
Yeah, I think, I mean, for us, what's really important is we maintain the standards that we, we brought, that we approved back in December. So we, we keep control of those aesthetics, um, and then the fees that we talked about stay the same for us, because there's still, you know, significant amount of effort managing anything in our own way, whether it's attached to our pole, and, uh, so when we came in December, we really waited, at the time we had the city poles and PG poles, as we do today, without us, our attachment fees applying no matter what, you know, the process and aesthetics, criteria applying. So that all stays the same.
So, so do you think, uh, and here with the recap of the recommendation again, so to change the option A, PG owns and maintains their poles, and you pay for that for a month, and you provide your electrical operation maintenance bill, um, and then, and then in the end, we will not have the upfront capital cost for your purchase of these lights and capital.
And then I think, I mean, a couple of other big benefits are, um, the light quality increases, and I think from a just a dark sky state, the LED lights could be drawn, good direction for lighting, and it really does fit into the environmental responsible council goal, uh, to use a lot less energy, they'll last a lot longer. So just overall, it's just a more, uh, more environmentally efficient, which means, which is, which is the option we go with. So we'll open up the questions, and ask the questions.
Thanks, questions?
Nancy. What would be our energy savings? Or is that, that's not figured into the, oh no, that's just the leases and the poles?
So, I have a dollar amount, not a, not a kilowatt savings, and it's a little apples to oranges, because we're currently option B. So if we did switch to option B, we'd see a much greater savings than the option A, because we're seeing an increase in cost for the poles and lights. Currently, under our option B, uh, right where we have the HPS lights, our monthly bill is twenty-two thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars for those lights. That will go down to six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three.
Wow.
From an energy standpoint.
Right.
That would then be an increase for the cost of the poles themselves and the lights and the operation and maintenance of those assets.
But twenty-two thousand down to six thousand, that's a huge savings.
Pure, pure energy, yes. So it's a, it's a good decrease.
Right. I have a second question, if that's okay too. Um, looking at the numbers, it's, it seems like a very, very generous offer from PG, so you sort of think, you know, what's in it for them? I mean, there's an increase, you know, a monthly increase, but, I mean, that, with that amount of money, I think, what, it takes almost eight years just to get the one point six million back, let alone the infrastructure stuff? So then, they would be looking for the revenue from the attachments?
We haven't had those conversations, which I don't...
Not to look a gift horse in the mouth, but it seems like it's very generous, and so you sort of think, what's in it for them?
They've been working with all the cities in the area, they come up with really what, what we think is a more generous approach, um, to dealing with streetlights in cities, and so, I guess we take them, make their things count.
I do know consistency is something they've, uh, said that there would be, there would be a good benefit of this option. It's all mixed ownership levels, and, um, we have a mixture throughout our cities, we're just having one ownership and maintenance throughout, no type.
Yeah, no, that would be great, and to have it be so energy efficient.
But in terms of, yeah, the, the other one, you know, have a discussion.
Uh, we did ask, I mean, and, you know, there's no guarantees, we didn't, we asked, like, long-term escalation.
Right.
A year, two, it was rising, quadruple.
That was my question.
Yeah, because it's, because financially it was...
I mean, what if they said, well, three percent here is what they were currently assuming for the foreseeable future? So that's reasonable, I mean, that's inflation, um, so that's not, that's, doesn't seem like an outrageous multiple factor.
There's no guarantee.
There, right, there are never any guarantees.
It's not, it's not contracted.
Correct.
Cool. I have three thoughts.
But we pay them, we currently pay them to maintain our poles anyway.
Yes.
Right.
I mean, we're gonna see an increase in that, if, if we stay on option B and have that upfront capital ourselves, we'll still pay PG to maintain them.
Yes, correct. And what we didn't talk about is option C, where we would own everything and maintain everything, uh, because that, there was such a giant onerous thing, that we told you all what option C was, and then we didn't really go into a, it's a great, it's a big, it's a giant, and we would own everything underground that we can't see, and it, and really a little, but that's, you know, that's one way to, to completely own every, um, we thought option A was the ideal option, and option B over our poles.
Right. And I had one more quick question. Um, when you're talking about light pollution and switching over to the LED lights, I know some communities in other states, for things like parking lots and, not necessarily a roadway that needs the maximum amount of lighting, but anything that's, um, commercial, or parking lots, or around city buildings and stuff, they're switching to a very, very yellow light. It's almost like orangey-yellow, it's very peculiar, but it's supposed to have super, super low, um, light pollution factor, and then also for any kind of animals or migratory birds, or even insects, it's supposed to be vastly superior. And since a lot of, like, of our public parking and some of the other areas are, like, by wetlands or by the river somewhat, have we ever looked into that, or does anybody have any knowledge of that?
I think that's what PG was, was trying to do whenever they went from, they were, I think they were like a forty-five hundred Kelvin, which is that, sort of that bright white light, and then, um, those that had installed around the region in some places, and then uninstalled. And now they're down to three thousand Kelvin, so like, if you are a homebo, um, you can buy the LED, the white lights, or three thousand Kelvin lights versus the, you know, the soft, they're, they're called soft white LED, versus the, the daylight LED, and that's really like, that's the difference. You see sort of this bright blue light, and then you see like softer yellow light, so.
To respond a, a, a little differently, so we replaced all of the, all of our parking lot lights, um, and we went to LED two years ago, I believe, it was...
It's been staggered, I think it's been occurring over about the last five years, but I think it's about complete for a couple of years.
And one of the, and, and I know we looked at, um, our options and, um, making them as environmentally friendly as possible, and the, um, the, making them not the, the bright white light that you do see in some of the, I, we were just driving past an apartment complex yesterday, and the, the, the lights are so bright, and we consciously did not go with those type of lights, but I don't know about the, um, what you're referring, referring to, um, specifically, but...
And I'm not exactly sure what they're called, I've just experienced them, and it's a different, but it, but I'll try to find out, like, what the, what you would even call it.
Hmm. Okay.
I've got articles mailed to me as well about the migratory bird lights.
Maria?
No, it was, uh, just along the same question that, um, Counselor Nancy was talking about. It is a generous offer, so I, I thought, like, why? I mean, it sounds like a dumb question, but I just thought, like, why would they do that? And, um, what's, kind of like, what's in it for them, or like, how, what do they gain? That was just kind of my thinking process.
I think they gain our streetlights, they gain the energy that can be used in our streetlights for, until some day they decide we wanted to change to a different system, and it's, it's, the revenue can be had, right?
Yeah, the attachment revenue.
If I were to guess what, what they actually gain, and then I would also say they then barely get part of it, and so, you know, they sell electricity, and light is electricity.
Part of their, part of their big goal is, remember always, energy conservation? Part of their, part of their big goal is, remember always, energy conservation?
Yeah, reduce.
Uh, when they had the mayor's meet at their headquarters, they specifically talked about the light pole program and how they redid it to make it more incentivized for cities. And it helps them meet their goals. I mean, they're under goals and under the gun to cut back electricity generation, they don't want to be using coal out of, you know, Montana and Eastern Oregon. Um, so this helps them hit their numbers so that it can decrease electric, electricity consumption. Other questions? Paul?
So I, I have a couple, but I also want to follow up on council president Grimes' comments. Yeah, the offer does seem generous, and that was one of my questions I want to get to in a second that relates to that. But we all, we had a presentation from somebody, one of the three-minute public comments, and they talked about light specific, um, to the city. And what does this plan with, does this plan at all address that, or are we just, we're swapping lights and we aren't, we're not worrying about that for right now? That's a conversation down the road. And you kind of started to answer it with council president Grimes, but I didn't really hear, I didn't hear the answer I wanted to hear. I didn't even hear the direction, um, that I'd like to see us be going to with respect to light sensitivity. So does this address it at all, or, other than we're dropping it from forty kev's to thirty or whatever the?
I don't recall the, the public comment.
This, this does not address private. So his.
Wasn't just private, he was also was talking about the overall, he just, my understanding of that conversation was just overall lighting, um, and per se.
So this is only in the right of way?
Only in the right of way, but this also doesn't seem to, as, as, um, as Nancy said, this doesn't seem to address that issue. It's still a pretty bright light. And so what's our alternative, once we enter into this agreement? Can we go back, you know, five years from now, and we finally decide enough's enough, and we're harming our, you know, the parking lot next to the, some of our environmentally sensitive areas are at risk? And do we have any alternative then at that point to go back, or we, we shut out of the conversation with P G E?
So my understanding is we can go, we can switch A to B to C when we actually want to, because there's a program. You know, and again, not being a lighting expert, I can't assume it would be a technical question. I do know that the lower Kelvin lights are warmer, softer lighting. And so I think it's significantly better than what we were working on a couple of years ago. I think that's, that's probably as much as I can answer, not being a, not being a lighting expert.
Right, fair enough.
And the pushback from P G E from going too warm or too low is, is a safety issue.
Okay. Well, if, if we want to switch back, I doubt seriously if P G E would sell us the lights back for one point six. I just don't see that happening. For some reason, it would be worth more to them than later down the road. I just, I see that already, so I wouldn't go down that road. So, one, well, there you go, so. One, one of my questions, and I was troubled by this when the original work session was brought forward a couple of years ago. I was always under the impression that the funding for the light and the light maintenance came from our utility bills, but clearly, that's not what I'm hearing, and I didn't hear that in the other one. So, how, and I, it was touched on by one of the other councillors, who, who's getting the funding and from, where's the funding coming from? And it was, were we just maintaining it out of our, you know, gee, we, we property tax everybody and we, so we pay for the maintenance out of that, or was, you know, where's the money coming from?
So it's road operating, so we pay for it, or utility, just like any other entity, so.
But is P G E paying for it through, uh, their utility bill then? Is that how they're, I mean, are, are we seeing that in our utility bill? Is that just the cost of them sending us an electric bill? The cost is that we also gloriously get our streets lit?
Yes, so today, under option B, we, we pay to replace poles and lights or anything anywhere out of every P M A that's in operation. Out of our utilities, from to P G E to do that.
Plus, plus for the power to, for the lights.
Plus the power, but, but, so there's no income source coming from the, 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 the street lamps on the street are not paid for by any, in any one single source? It's just out of an operating fund? There's no utility tax that, of which is for road fee, for road lamp, for light, street lamp, sorry, street lamps?
Well, one-seventh of the utility, the road utility fee that we pay, that residents pay from, so there's the line, that's the road utility fee. According to that ordinance, when it was passed, one-seventh of that fee goes towards streetlights. Everything, all the rest of it, um, we, so, so that, that is the revenue source. I'm looking at Dawn.
Yes, one-seventh of the road utility fee, it's transferred from the road utility fee fund to the road operating fund. And then we have this total cost, and expenditures, which offset, but that's one-seventh of the revenue coming from P G E.
So then what happens to that one-seventh if we transfer everything over to P G E? Are we still taking that one-seventh and then now we're using it for maintenance? And so, has the numbers for the one-seventh, does that equal what the maintenance bills, the increased maintenance bill is going to be?
So, so we, today, we pay for operations maintenance, and we pay for capital improvements upfront.
Right.
If we go to option A, we don't pay for the capital improvements upfront, we pay a higher operation maintenance cost.
Right. But so that.
Those dollars come from the same fund, so I don't know if we've gone through and we've done a budget exercise to see, uh, where that, exactly what that looks like.
I, I just would be reluctant if we made this change and then discovered that the one-seventh from the utility bill that's supposed to cover the cost of the streetlights, no longer costs, and we would have to raise that fee. I'm just, and I see our wonderful assistant city manager who really wants to talk, and if it's allowable, I would like for his response, because I know he knows numbers.
The one-seventh, the one percent is a portion of what we pay P G E out of the road operating fund. So we would still, we still have a payment to P G E, and that one-seventh is far less than what we pay, so that wouldn't have to change.
So two years from now, you wouldn't come before the council and the budget committee and say, we need to raise this utility fee because our maintenance costs with P G E are higher than what we anticipated?
Assuming the three percent increase.
Assuming a three percent, and we heard that, that there's no guarantees, but based on, I mean, obviously, if there was some extraordinary cost, we would all understand that, but just in the normal flow of business?
We've never had to change that because it's just, it's a small percentage of our total cost.
Okay.
So if we, the only way I can see that potentially happening is if our road operating, where we get the gas taxes up for that money, that wasn't enough to cover the cost of street lighting? Do we have to look at that?
Again, that would be, that would be something else, not a disagreement. I'm just concerned, I just don't want disagreement to trigger down the road, an increase in fees, because somehow, we didn't see that, but it sounds like you have looked at that.
Assuming the three percent increase for twenty-five, twenty-one years.
Twenty-one years. I'll be termed out by them, so I'm fine, that's okay. So the la, the last question, this gets really complicated, because there was already, already a series of emails and, and just kind of forewarning that I will be asking that something be taken out of the consent agenda so that it can be talked about individually. I'm, I'm puzzled by how, um, P G E has a right to a fee on something where nothing has changed, except P G owns a pole, oh, so I'm talking about the cell tower fee. So we've justified in December that that's what our cost was, because we have, there are inspections, there are things that we need to do, there are permitting processes. And so now, all that's changed is the ownership. And so how does that then entitle P G E to a fee, that if we're doing all the work, what's the other fee? And if, if there, if there's something that they're doing, then, and again, it sounds like we can talk about this at, you know, at the meeting, during the council meeting. How does, how does that change the cost structure? Because I, I don't understand that.
So, so are the, the attachment fees, um, that we brought to you back in December, December tenth, were to cover the cost to the city?
Correct.
Of having the small cells anywhere in the right of way?
Correct.
No matter what they are attached to, whether it was us, whether it was P G E, whether it was anywhere in the right of way. So that was the cost for us to manage. So what, in addition to that, there is, there would, we always assumed there would be a cost if they were attached to P G E poles. That P G E would have the right on their poles to, to levy a fee, to at least feed to the same small cell attachments. And that covers their cost, which is separate from our cost. And so that's really, um, that's, that's kind of, kind of the answer to that question is, is we just always assumed that our, our cost for attachment, especially what we brought to you in December, and including the permitting costs, is all of the cost just to deal with having something in the right of way. And then if they were on P G E poles, even then, it's going to be P G E, they're on separate cost.
Well, let me approach it a different way. So, you cut, we cut, just like Jeff said, we covered all of the, the city regulatory costs through that attachment fee. And then, there's ownership of the poles. So let's say the city owns the pole, owns a pole, and Verizon comes to us and wants to attach
Right.
um, a small cell to one of the city-owned poles. What is not included in the fee schedule or that attachment is what would we charge as a lease for our city-owned pole? That would cover the lease payment, the, the power, you know, it's like, how mu, what, what power needs would they have? And so, we would negotiate separately on a city-owned pole with whoever wanted to attach, so they would have to pay that six hundred and twenty-five dollars for, to be in, in the, in the right of way. And then, we would negotiate separately with them of the lease. And that is exactly what, what P G E would have to, any P G E-owned pole, like, they wouldn't give approval to attach without some kind of lease arrangement. And it's neither here nor there for us at this, as a regulatory agency, what P G E charges as a lease to somebody for attaching. It's neither here nor there. And we had never negotiated something for, we haven't yet negotiated anything for attachment to a city-owned pole. So we don't have the cost for that, and we haven't had that situation yet.
Well.
Does that make sense?
Well, your explanation makes sense, but that's not my understanding of what we approved back in December. My understanding was, that was the, the cost, my understanding was there is a, a new, a, a ruling that we can only now charge our actual costs, which, those were deemed to be fair and appropriate. So I, I just find it, I, I have a couple of concerns. Number one, i- if we price ourselves out of the market, we don't get small cell technology, and that's been proven across the country. The cities that have the absolute lowest costs already have that technology ongoing. Boston comes to mind. Um, the cities that have not addressed it, and we are one of the first in the metro areas, my understanding, to really look at this and kind of get out in front of it. And so, I was hopeful we would be one of the first to get that technology in our city. But if we start laying down, well, gee, guess what, we've, we've now sold our poles, and so now you've got someone else to work with. That technology then just gets pushed back by the, the companies, primarily A T and T and Verizon, to make that commitment to, to install. And I don't see how that changes, the change of ownership would change the cost of the pole. And again, I go back to what I thought we approved in December was, that was their cost. It was six fifty on year one, I believe it was six fifty in years after, that, um, because it was a fifty-dollar application fee. And that you, and I believe there was a beautiful little diagram of what our costs were, the, the, um, a chart, a, a nice flow chart, as well as a whole essay on, these are our costs. And so, that, and that's fine, but then when you, now we're adding on, you know, guess what, we've sold the poles, go, you know, pay us and then pay them, doesn't, to me, seem like a good way to, um, move on getting that technology in our city, which would be my, one of my, one of my priorities, but.
Well, if, 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 if there was a billboard out on I five, a billboard, and the city has regulations for that billboard, and a fee for having that billboard, we don't own the billboard. But we have fees associated with, with that billboard, regulatory fees. Whoever owns that billboard is going to enter into a negotiation with somebody that wants to have something on that billboard. That's, doesn't have anything to do with the city costs for the right of way, or for inspecting it and making sure that that billboard is, is safe and appropriate, and traffic, um, um, like, traffic conditions, and all of that is the six twenty-five or the six fifty. Whoever owns that billboard is in a separate negotiation with that.
I, I don't want to belabor the point, but my problem is that my understanding was in December, we approved a price point for a cell technology to go on a pole. And from my understanding, that included leasing that, the lease fee for that pole, because there was nothing in that ordinance that we passed, ordinance, resolution, whatever, that we passed that said, it's six fifty plus, you need to negotiate with the pole. And in fact, I, I thought the discussion, and I, boy, I'd have to go over notes and, and, and see if I'm merging two different discussions together. But I thought the discussion specifically was on, what about the poles that we own versus the poles that P G E owns? Because at that time, we owned a majority, but there were poles owned by other entities. And I thought, my understanding was that's all, you know, that's the cost. And now we're hearing, no, it's going to be a different cost. And again, this, to me, goes against trying to encourage, um, small cell technology into our area. And, and what we can do to, you know, enhance that effort versus basically say, we want you to stay away. And that, that's, that's my, my only concern, and, and I, I don't think it can be answered, it doesn't sound like it's something that can be answered right now.
I'm just gonna add that, again, the same, like, the same meeting, we had a P G E, P G has always had fees for their poles. The carriers know they have their own fees. This is not news to the carriers, P G has always charged attachment fees. We never just, we were talking city fees, not P G E. And it's not for us to legislate what P G E does, but they've always had them, and they knew when, um, any carrier knows they're gonna have to pay them to P G, and deal, also would deal with those cities. And as far as our rates, I know most of the cities in the area are talking in the exact same dollar amounts we are for rates. Other questions?
Thanks for all the work, I appreciate it. I am excited that we're looking at L E D lights, not just because, um, you have to find the old ones at Goodwill or whatever you're doing right now.
Still in the mother city.
So I think hunting and gathering and however you're doing this stuff is, it doesn't sound efficient to me. And I'm interested in efficiency for our taxpayers. So, that's a really good thing. I get, some of the design questions I had, as far as how it fits into the budget of what the anticipated costs are, like, the thing that's confusing to me is it looks like there's some options that we could go for, for warmer lights, for more decorative poles. Um, and are those reflected in the costs that we're looking at, or is that something that we add on? So that's reflect.
Cost estimates are for, like, equipment.
Okay.
You have decorative poles and your cost estimates are based on replacing those with similar L E D stuff.
Okay. And then, um, I think just because there is an interest in, from the community around the quality of light for the environmental concerns as well, I would like to know more information from P G E about those options when the time is appropriate for that. One of the confusing things I have, especially when I look at the gra, the graph that's not on this, the hybrid A and B and all that. And when I think about what we're doing is, we're, by going to L E D, we save money. So, we're raising monthly fees. I guess I just don't understand how, I know that the poles are absorbed in there, but I don't understand how we protect our ability to save money by using more energy-efficient light sources when we, um, make this change, and how it reflects. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? It's a little confusing to me when I'm looking at the graph, I guess.
So we don't, so we don't realize, we won't realize under option A, the, the energy-saving cost, the cost saved by, from energy saving. P G E will realize that savings. Well, and, and not really, because they're, they, they sell energy, so they just sell less energy. So once we give option A to P G E, and once you, they buy our street, street lights and street poles, they own them, any revenue generated from electricity is theirs. So there's a cost-saving from H P S L E D, and that's, you don't see that cost savings. So they're selling less energy, so I guess, I think they, they don't see the cost savings either. So, so I mean, that's really, I guess that's.
Well, they get a cost savings for their operating costs, right? So they get a cost savings for their operating costs, so that's how come they make a sweet deal to us, because they get a, a, because what it looks like here, looks like a savings that we get, but when you really figure in the new math of what the energy cost would be. because what it looks like here, looks like a savings that we get, but when you really figure in the new math of what the energy cost would be to us, over time, what is that savings really look like? Like, the savings don't get passed along exactly.
Right.
They get absorbed. So, I, I just think that's an important part of the equation for me, just thinking about long-term gains for the city after twenty-one years, and are we going to make a short-term decision that costs us, or costs the community in the future? Especially, I don't know, like, what motivates people around, sometimes what motivates people around being more environmentally-minded are the cost savings and the efficiencies that are in that. So, I guess that's my question for you guys, like, what does that look like?
And twenty-one years is a long time when we're talking about that. So, it's a brand-new issue, and twenty-one years is old.
Yeah.
And so, then, you know, that's ten years. We have some that are really, really old, if they borrow, it's usually a year's worth.
Well, that's a really good point, actually. Thanks, yeah. And then, I guess that's the other thing. So, if there's these poles that they own, if you, if the technology ever got to the place, because also, technology in twenty-one years is quite a long time to be talking about that as well. What, you know, do, do you have, I mean, once we sell these, once we, once we do this thing with the poles and the whole light structure, I don't know if you would ever go back, even if it became very, a- as far as energy-wise, it became, could you, you can buy poles, I don't know.
I, I mean, I, you know, again, future councils have the option going back. But, you know, it's that, yeah, it's hard to predict what's going to happen in the future. You know, I, I think for us, the big benefit is, is reduced upfront capital cost, and it pays it for itself over a long period of time. And then, we're out of the streetlight business, so we're, we're not having to maintain and manage the streetlights. We're working with our partners to make that happen.
Okay.
They're better at streetlights than we are.
Mm-hmm.
That's their business.
Right, and to Paul's point too, I mean, I know, it's funny, I had a conversation with my husband one time ago. I said something about those old streetlight, he, you know, I never even realized there was a streetlight there. And he, he reads in the front bedroom right underneath it. And so, I think the fact that those, and we live with the really old, old sulfur lights, I'm sure. And so, and part of it's because it's a really warm light, that's not super bright. I know people have different opinions about co- of those benefits, but, but I think, you know, that what you're saying makes sense, what they would understand about how to put specific lighting in different areas for what the needs are for those areas. Thanks.
Other questions? Robert?
First, just a factual question on the six hundred and thirty-five wood poles, it's one point two seven million to replace those. Does that include converting them to LED, or is that in the other bucket?
It's in the other bucket.
Okay. We talked a little bit about maintenance costs and putting a collar on those, and you mentioned that wasn't part of the discussions. But the mechanism here is going to be an agreement between the city and PGE that we sell you X poles, and you will then maintain them. So theoretically, we could have a rate collar in there somewhere that was tied to some CPI or some other, you know, factor that PG might agree to.
Sure.
That theoretically, it's possible. Okay. So, I'd like to see that, just because it, you know, this is a lifetime deal. You know, over twenty-one years, yes, the capital that we get is going to help pay for that, but then, those twenty-one years passed, you know, it, it's a factor. Second, will the agreement contain a timeline for replacing the HPS lights and the poles? Now, I understand incentives are aligned, they want to save energy costs, we want newer poles, but is there going to be a timeline built into the, the sale agreement?
We can, so we can put that in the agreement and negotiate early decision.
Okay. How about new lights? So, a new subdivision goes in, are those automatically then owned by PGE, or are those then the city's property, because they're not in this agreement?
So, I would, I mean, I would tend to want a temporary agreement, so that all new lights that come into the city go to PGE.
Okay. Currently, for the streetlights, do we own the wires under the ground, or does PGE own those?
We only own option C, city auto-maintain, very few lights. The majority of them below ground is PGE's.
Okay. So, because they own the wires underground, are they now paying a right-of-way fee?
PG doesn't pay right-of-way.
Okay. And that fee won't change because, just because they're taking ownership of the lights, there's no additional cost? Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Nancy, Nancy's first.
Thank you. To dovetail into your question, I understand like small subdivisions would automatically be for PGE if we were to add something, but what about something as large as like Basalt? Do we have to draft a separate, a separate document for something?
Basically, I mean, it's a series of smaller developments.
Okay.
I mean, not small, like two hundred units, which is a good size of building. And twice the size of second farmers. So, I mean, as we, I guess that's up for, up for discussion. We'll have to bring those in as option B as possible. My, my sense is, it would, option A is going to be good for us, that we always have the ability to be flexible in the future.
Okay, so the initial agreement, we could make it just for what we have existing, and then step back?
I mean, it is worth a discussion, because we would work with this with PGE, and that makes some sense, and that, that council will have to agree.
Okay. Thanks. And then, I, my last question, it just, if, if they own the poles now, and the, and the, basically, they own the process going forward, what, how does that change if we need to add light poles somewhere? Let's say, we're making changes in the park, and we're putting in a dog park, and we need more lighting for that. Now, we just kind of request it of ourselves, but going forward, how do we request it of them, and does it change the process, or increase any rates?
We, we work with PGE really closely today, so they, we don't have any, we don't have equipment or staff to make any light poles or install light poles. And so, we, PGE installs our light poles, and when they say, they go out and replace it. When we want a new streetlight somewhere, they go and install it. So, so we, and that, I don't expect that relationship to change on the street.
And it won't cost us anymore, or anything?
I mean, it'll cost us more in the long term.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Where's it?
And one thing after Robert was talking, that when, when we're looking at timeframes and all that, and I know because you brought this up, but the, I'm just really mindful about these wood poles that could fall over, that we prioritize the wood poles that sound dangerous. Thank you.
We were just answering, we were answering, like, yeah, you said why now? We kind of, we're structuring, I think, and they're really good. Because they're, they're old, it's not serious light.
Other questions?
I got one question. The hybrid option kind of intrigued me. So, why is, give me the reasons, A, is better than not the hybrid? Because it seems like we had all, most of the benefits except we didn't get the one point six million. If I'm reading this right, or I might be misunderstanding, but it looked like the hybrid option was pretty darn good to me.
So, the upfront capital cost, how does we?
But PG's paying for it.
The hybrid option takes care of the upfront capital cost, but it kicks the can on the rest of the assets, and further increases the amount of inconsistency that ownership may be exposed to.
So, we move by kicks to can?
Well, so, the assets that we don't have today, we could go ahead and move forward with and send them to PGE's way, and they'll rip like those and make some.
Right.
But then, we will still retain ownership of the rest of those assets that are currently okay. We will be responsible for replacing those, or converting them to option A down the road, where those could get in the sale. Current option A, they all would be, would be the cost.
So, is it an administrative thing?
We would need to then still have a whole replacement budget line item in addition to, we would need to maintain that. I have no current cap for replacing poles, we would still have, I don't know the exact number of assets, but.
So, the pole, the, under the hybrids, sorry. They would only upgrade the existing poles, but new poles we'd have to purchase, is that what you're saying?
So, under the hybrid, we would take, the proposal that was put together was we would take the six hundred and sixty-five wood poles, and the lights, and convert them to option A, so we could, PGE would convert those to, you know, new assets. We would still maintain the rest of our option U poles, we wouldn't have to steal five of those. So, when those fail, we would still be responsible.
So, that was roughly, how many, eighteen hundred or something?
After conversion?
Yeah, yeah. So, basically, the big difference here is the wood versus the existing steel. Versus A, it's the whole enchilada, this is the two different pole types.
And but, can I, buying them? Buying them now is probably cheaper than buying them then too. The price probably will go up with, or not?
I understand, I understand.
So, what's, what's the negative twenty-three point eight three percent under change into linear budget, under the hybrid option?
That's how much our monthly budget currently decreases, because we realize some of that energy cost savings, which would not be offset by the increased monthly cost for those assets. So, when the question is asked about, do you realize that energy costs, we really don't, because that gets eaten up by the cost of those assets. And we'll take more of that stuff today if we're, if we're moving forward. So, during that hybrid, we would see some of that savings, and we would still maintain responsibility for all of our mid-line assets we would keep.
Okay. That, it just seems to me, I guess, I guess it's your perspective, I mean, the big, the, the big thing in option A is you get the one point six million from PG buying your assets, and they're going to take them over, but hybrid, it's got some pluses in my book, but. I mean, yeah, you're going to have two sets of poles still then, correct? We'd have PG's poles versus our poles, the ones that are going to replace the ones that we already have. So, it'd be kind of the situation we're in now, except to be all new poles or newer poles. Right, and, but you'd have the administrative burden of two sets of ownership on poles versus one entity doing the whole thing, paying when you're one point six million, but then you being on the hook to pay them increased fees every month for that maintenance and upkeep and pole, pole charges.
Well, the hybrid has like, what it's going to cost. And I guess the hy- the hybrid too, it doesn't necessarily address, like, what it's going to cost us for the non-wood pole maintenance and upgrade and stuff going down the road. So, that's maybe why the hybrid looks so PG-keen, is it doesn't have any, like, costs associated with it for our own personal maintenance of anything that's not wood, right?
Very good point. It doesn't have a long-term cost type of.
For the upgrading and changing.
So, that's some set of poles that are newer, would be on our bet, would be on our books still, to maintain and enhance.
So, it might not be eighty-seven center poles, so that's, sixty-nine. We would still be responsible for that. That's okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I, just to ask a question about that though, is, those poles seem like they would be more resilient to me, and less to keep maintained, because they're not wood that's rotting, they're fiberglass and metal that lasts a long time.
Till a car hits them.
And, well, yeah, but I mean, a car hitting one is not replacing
Yeah.
the majority of all the poles in our whole city for, I don't know if we need all new poles, or if these, what these, what the condition of these poles are. So, I guess my question is about that, in like, are these poles able to be converted to LED easily? Are they already, are they failing to, are they, like, what kind of upgrades? If you were going to keep the poles, for instance, the, the metal ones or the fiberglass ones, to upgrade them to LED, would you have to change out the whole pole, or, so we're basically buying?
We have, we have in the past, a couple of them. One by Fred Myers, we had replaced the whole pole. So, I mean, there's been, there's been some instances where we've replaced the whole.
But it's not like the standard, like, you, you're not saying it's the standard practice that you'd always replace the whole pole.
We can convert just the box itself for the maintenance.
Okay. That's, that's my question.
Yeah, because it seems to me, but I guess depending where you go, and I don't want to beat this to death, is that if we make the decision, this hope Basalt Creek idea, that, oh, no, if these poles go up, maybe there'll be city poles, we won't use them. That's when the hybrid model might work, because then you're going to have a collection of poles you own yourselves anyway. So, you're going to have to deal with it. So, it, it just, those, no, those poles will be newer than the ones we have existing. So, the hybrid model might work better math-wise, if that's a decision we decide to do as to all in expense. Paul?
So, just a follow-up on, that occurred to me. So, on the, the saving, we're going to receive cash from PGE. And I was trying to find it in this presentation, but I, I thought I remembered it was twenty-one years is what that pays for. I, I didn't do the math. Is that twenty-one years, just the one point six million divided by the difference in the maintenance fee? Or is that assuming a amortized rate of return over?
Assuming if you're percent growth, then it'd be PGE, and assuming no, but one point six.
And so, then, my second part question, so then, we're reserving that entire fund as a fund for this expense? I mean, obviously, at some point in time, if, if a other, or if this council decides, oh, I don't want to reserve it, I want to spend it. But I'm assuming we want to reserve that, or?
I mean, I think that's up to council. I mean, we really consider that, we know it's our decision.
Okay. All right. So, what do you need from us? Was it just informational at this point, or?
I think we'd like to version.
Okay.
Right.
I mean, my, my, you know, I like your recommendation, but I'm still interested in the hybrid option, depending what we decide, you know, we know Basalt Creek is coming, and are we going to hand that all over to PGE, or are we going to maintain those, and so all be brand-new? So, if that's the decision the council makes a few months from now, then to me, the hybrid op- option works. But if we decide the heck with that, then staff recommendation's okay, would work, but that's just my opinion.
So, my thought is, option A works for me, but I want to see, as I mentioned, a rate collar. I want to see a timeline for the development, and some sort of understanding on what happens with new poles, and, and what effect that may or may not have on our right-of-way fee.
Others?
I agree pretty much with what's been said. I'd like to see more information about the outcosts over time with the hybrid, and, and the recommendation, just to better, make a better decision, if that makes sense.
Okay.
With the, with this stuff, that Counselor Kellogg.
Can we whittle it down to A and hybrid, with, in my mind, hybrid being in our back pocket, depending what we decide with Basalt Creek, is? Maria?
Yeah, I agree with Mayor. I, I'd like to see more like the pros and the cons for, for the hybrid and, and the option A. I mean, I'm not opposed to option A, I just, when he brought up hybrid, I actually started reading a little bit more about it, and I feel like it wasn't really, because I know you're recommending option A, so we focused on that. But then, the hybrid opportunity came, I mean, it just popped up, and I'm like, oh, okay, yeah, that's another option that maybe I would like to see what would look like. I would hate to, I don't know, sell our assets and, you know, in the long run, affect, I mean, even if it's twenty-one years, doesn't matter, it still is the future, and affect the commu- the community in the future. And I, it's hard to make a decision right now. So, I, I would like to see the pros and the cons on the hybrid and, and the option A.
So, can I ask, are we, should we move forward with PGE on a negotiation for option A, and then come back for, for the existing, and then come back with all that information with your requests that you've talked about here? So, we'll then, we'll have more information from PGE, more specifics, and we can further detail hybrid for future, for future poles like Basalt Creek. Is that what I'm hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that, okay.
I'm interested to.
I'm interested too in the finance, like, moving forward, what it looks like projection-wise, from the hockey fan in the front row.
For, for PGE, or, I mean, for hybrid, or for?
Yeah, because if you look at it long-term.
Yeah, because if you look at it long-term, we have, there's some shrinking costs that we would incur. There's some more stable assets that we have that are less, you know, cost less to maintain than wood, you know. And just looking at the projections of it, both those options, and understanding better the, the staff recommendation. It's not that I doubt it, I, you know, but I want to be responsible in my decision-making, especially with money and decisions that we can't really go back on, that, it doesn't look like me, to me, that we could go back on that very easily. So, it's, yeah.
So, yeah, I just want to follow, because Counselor Kellogg brought, I thought, some really good points. And Counselor Reyes, I, I have the same feeling that Counselor Reyes has with respect to, on the one hand, I don't want to appear that we're just selling our assets in order for a temporary gain, and leaving the problem to some other generation. But, because of what it does to replacing. But because of what it does to replacing HPS, pardon if I use the abbreviation, that's a mouthful, with LEDs. You know, that, to me, makes a lot of sense and is something that is worthwhile. But I also agree with the mayor, I know, we're not supposed to agree, but I agree with the mayor, that that hybrid looks, is something that, especially with new developments coming in, is something that would also be an interesting thing to look at. I doubt, I don't know where PGE stands on all that, but it just, option A sounds like something that with a couple of, with a caller here on the rate and a timeline of what we're getting is something I think that would work, and I would certainly be interested in looking at.
So you got what you need, Carolyn?
I think so. I just wanna look at.
Jeff and Nick, and see if, 'cause I'm a little more removed from it, did you get, do we have what we need to do a next step?
Yes, I think, I think we'll, we'll wanna look on and talk about maybe some of the projections on, you know, one of the important things is the payoff on one six million in twenty-one years. So the value of those assets from today to twenty-one years is significantly different. They're at zero at some point, so we probably wanna look at that to really inform the discussion about, you know, even with option A. In twenty-one years, bringing option A, or option B assets are not worth what they are today. So that's part of the conversation, so we've done it.
But in terms of the hybrid discussion?
And now it informed the hybrid discussion.
Okay, all right. All right, then yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Nick. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right. Slip on the beginning, I think. All right. Pretty close to being on time. Woo-hoo. All right. So we're up to council meeting, agenda review, communications, and roundtable. So as far as pledge, is it Paul? So back to Robert for pledge.
All right.
We don't have any proclamations tonight. Consent agenda.
So, thank you for being, yeah, in light of the, I guess it was an email and a letter we received from Verizon and a response from the city manager. I would just, I'm not necess, I'm, I just like to see all that come out in public and have that discussion and just so make sure everyone's on the same page. And also given just, you know, out of respect to Verizon and what they are to the community, that it just be some, you know, they've asked to be treated separately. I would request we honor that request and then have the discussion that was presented by the city manager in her email.
All right. So we'll remove that from consent. Any, anything else on consent? Anybody wants removed? All right. So now we're up to council comments, and we'll start with Robert.
I have none today. Thank you.
Whoa. Maria?
Um, yeah, I went to the MAC or MACC meeting on June fourteenth, very first time. And it was quite interesting. I just sat there and actually just listened and heard what was, basically, they talked about Frontier. And that was sold, Frontier was sold to like this Wave, I think it's called Wave something. And they talked about Quest. They're not renewing their franchise contract, and it's due December thirty-first, twenty-twenty. And so just Comcast was there as well, but they didn't really have a lot going on. I'm still learning, but it was a very interesting meeting, and our next meeting will be till like December. So that was cool. The other one was the, oh, I attended the Diversity Task Force, and it was quite fun interacting with the community about housing. We focused the entire meeting on housing, and that was really fun. And a lot of great feedback and information coming from there. So that was it.
Paul?
Yeah, so last weekend, I attended the Clackamas County Corning Committee Retreat. A very interesting two days. We spent Friday talking about their car registration fee and how to spend their one point one million dollars, which is a little bit of money that they're trying to spread in a lot of different ways. So it was a very interesting discussion. And then Saturday, had a great, a lot of presentations on affordable housing, low-income housing, just, and the different types of housing. And I was, interesting, I did not get a chance to talk to the consultant who made the presentation, but it's, she mentioned Tualton twice in her presentation. So I'm interested at some point in time in following up because it was some, some really cool things that she was outlining for Clackamas County, which, and ultimately, obviously, for Tualton as well. And that's my report, by the way, for the money I spent.
All right.
I have a few things for you guys. So I went to the Business CIO meeting on June eleventh and learned about, more about earthquake preparedness and possibilities and a new fault that they actually found in Tualton, which is good to know, and how to prepare a business. So it was good, it was really good to see all the different types of businesses there. And then businesses like mine that are in my home, it's also an interesting plan to have. So I thought it was really an excellent learning opportunity and really well put together. And then later on, we went to the open house at Basalt Creek, and they talked about three options for the bridge, which were pretty much a yard away from each other. So it was, the differences were very slight. So if people have any feedback for the county, it's the time to write. I also, I will let Frank talk about the PAB meeting, but I went to the housing.
You talk about it.
Meeting.
You're taking over. You talk about it.
Well, um.
I'm done. I tagged out.
So, okay, then I'll do that. So I just wanna thank Frank for coming with me to my first meeting, introducing me to the group. And I can see also why they're really gonna miss him as chair. He ran a really great meeting. It was a really warm, friendly, good group. And thank you for your leadership there, and I understand your passion around, you know, housing for, making affordable housing available to people here in Tualton. The programming was interesting. They're going to be opening, obviously, a chair and a vice-chair position. So that's a conversation that's going to be happening at the upcoming meeting of that one. Then Friday, I was really fortunate to, with these two, Jeff and Nick and Torren? Terrence.
Terrence.
Did a full tour of our water system from where we start, all the way through to the city. And it was just such a great lively discussion. We have such bright people working for our city. And they were very well-informed and very helpful, very engaged. And it was very, it was very, very interesting. So we talked about ways for the public to understand more about the water system in the future. And then on the eighteenth, I went to the Tualton Arts Advisory Committee. And I just wanna mention, we have a really exciting partnership, 'cause you guys should know this, with the Tualton River Keepers. So they're, they had done a project last year in Tigard in Hillsborough, and they're going to do one here. That's a storm drain project, being that they will be painting a mural on a storm drain to raise awareness about the fact that the water's not filtered that goes into the storm drains and that goes into our rivers and waterways. So there were other things that were covered in that meeting as well, but partnering with the River Keepers was a really nice partnership. And we were able to move along quickly in the artist selection, and so things are moving quickly in that project. So it's very exciting, and it has a nice environmental piece to it. And it also will be done with equity in mind, so there's some ethnic and language pieces. So you'll see it when you see it. Then Fri, okay, so I went to another conference put on by the Columbia Estuary called The Pervasive Problem of Plastics. I guess what I will say to the council is that, you know, they estimate for plastic, single-use plastic, that it stays in our system for five hundred years. But they're not even sure if that's true because we haven't had plastic that long. And we know that it breaks down to microplastics, which can get past the blood-brain barrier and can be real health problems, not only for animals in the water, in the water systems, but also for people. So it was a very diverse group of businesses, environmental, people, industries, and government, talking about curbing use. The other thing that was interesting is the re, in the recycling conversation, is that recycling only handles three percent of the problem of garbage. So it's reduce, reuse, then recycle, in that order. So that was a good thing for me to remember. There was a lot of other things. So if you guys have any questions about that or who is there, I have that information, and I have you to share with any of the counselors. And then I also attended the Police Foundation meeting today. And they voted me in as a new board member for the Police Foundation, so I will be helping with that. And then finally, I was with our mayor, at coffee with the mayor, and we had a really lively conversation with constituents, which I'll let him talk more about. But again, I just appreciate the collaborative spirit that you have. And it was, I just found it a really engaged, interesting conversation. And if anybody has any questions on any of those things, please don't hesitate to ask.
Well, I guess it's more of a question, I think, than anything else. But does anyone think that we need maybe like a work session piece or something on that grant that was rescinded, the planning grant? Or how, do we need a council?
I mean, it basically expires at the end of the week. So unless, I was gonna mention it, I got no response from Chair Bernard or Council President Peterson, Council President Peterson on that email. Nothing from their staff, nothing. So I'm gonna give Paul Slimon a call and say WTF, nothing. Not a, you know, not even like, we, well, we disagree with you, Mayor, we disagree with you, Mayor Pubinix, so na, 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 or something, but nothing. Slimon, Slimon is her chief of staff.
I just, if we needed like council-wide.
I mean, I mean, you all saw the, you know, Metro and Clackamas County is not gonna renew the hundred and seventy thousand dollar CET grant. They're gonna let it expire at the end of this week, this end of this fiscal year. I sent an email with a chunk ripped off from Robert, his legal eagle part, and put that in there and expressed my concern that they're not gonna renew it and why we don't agree with their interpretation. You saw the email, and like I said, no response. So I don't think a work session's gonna do anything. It's basically, I think their minds are made up, and the best I can do is get a phone call with Lynn Peterson and find out why and what's up and what's her vision or the Metro Council's vision on development of Stafford and how we're gonna pay for planning of this Stafford's future growth.
I guess process and partnership.
Yep.
Which feels very important right now.
Exactly.
Sounds like a good way to start. So that was what I was thinking, questions.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Basalt Creek Parkway Open House was held by Washington County. Quite a few people showed up. I think four of us, five of us showed up. We had like, yeah, at least four of us were there when I was there. Washington County showing the proposed three routes of the extension project. I mentioned a little wrap-up. It's gonna be in my Tualton Life article that comes out later in the week about it, letting people know about it. Giving them the email to submit comments and questions to, and also get a visual of the slides, the big posters they had out in the tents, to let people know this is going on. As we all heard, as counselors, the folks that are living down there are pretty concerned about the process, whether or not Washington County's listening to us and whether or not Washington County's listening to the residents in the development of the Salt Creek Parkway Extension. Attended my first Clackamas Mayor's meeting along with Sherlin, where they were all talking about your retreat. And it's an interesting, different dynamic than the Washington County mayors. Totally different. And so it was kinda weird. You know, it was my first one where I'm a lot more comfortable with the Washington County mayors, and I kept my mouth shut except for asking about Damascus. At the end, about Clackamas County mayors. But it was, it was an interesting meeting 'cause their big thing is talking about how to dispose those funds and how it, you know, benefit Clackamas County and deal with affordable housing. There was a presentation on what I'm calling their version of SERP. Clackamas County has a disaster preparedness team, and they're talking about how that should work out and how they will assist cities if they don't have anything. Coffee with the mayor went well. You know, one thing, bad thing is, we gotta look at your calendar, figure out that when Father's Day is the next day, don't have a meeting. It was a lot less intended, but they stayed the whole time. I didn't have any turnover. When people sat down, they stayed for a little hour and a half, and there was lots of conversations. Again, it'll be in my Tualton Life article, everything from water conservation over the summer, where our water comes from, how Tualton moving forward is doing, how can I suggest a project, affordable housing, lots of good comments. Fourth, attended the Washington County Corning Committee meeting on the seventeenth. Preheated discussion about the regional transportation funding measure. If you don't know, Tualton-Shorewood Road was bumped down to a tier-two project, even though we were fiercely advocating with the Washington County mayors that be a tier-one. And I was asking Washington County why it was put down to tier-two. And it comes down to, most of the projects that are in tier-one are related to bike ped because those are the people who are attending and advocating for projects at these meetings. I was, given to me as a suggestion that if the mayors in the southeast corner of Washington County have concerns about what the corridor's gonna be designated and concerns about southwest corridor and light rail, that we should probably go and testify as part of the three-minute public hearings part, public comments. Because they're hearing from a very staunch, how should I put it? Very dedicated advocating groups of bike ped projects and not building additional lanes. That's what they're hearing, and they said it might be nice to hear something else. That followed with Chair Harrington's mayor's meeting. Subject discussion there was SDCs and what Washington County is looking at to make affordable housing and public housing a lot more affordable for development and what cities can do to assist in that. So it was a pretty good discussion. Attended J-PAC on the twentieth, seven-thirty in the morning. What's interesting there is the TV Highway Corridor Plan. This is a project that's been in the works for years, where they're studying basically from Hillsborough all the way to Beaverton, TV Highway, on how to make that more accessible, bike-friendly, ped-friendly, bus-friendly, do development along that whole corridor, bring residences in. And the question I brought up is that, you know, this is a really good template for what we wanna do in ninety-nine W. The way I mentioned before about, you know, from Sherwood to Tigard, how can we take that kind of template, this kind of plan, and do that in ninety-nine W and how we would get the funds? So the discussion was about getting grants from Metro. It could be done. We just gotta work our way up to that and maybe get the funding and work with our three other sister cities to make this happen, to get a funding for a project like this that looks at the whole corridor and how to make it better, decrease traffic, and revitalize certain sections in ninety-nine W that are lacking right now. They also had a, the Metro Safe Routes to School program update, which was interesting, on the projects they're spending. And I guess Tigard is implementing, the city of Tigard's overseeing the stuff that happens with Tiger Tualton School District, as far as safe routes to school. The Regional Travel Options Grant, there was a review of the projects that got granted. It was about one point three million dollars they put out for travel options. And about half that, Clackamas County was complaining they didn't get that much money, but you add it up, like, five hundred thousand dollars with the projects are funded through the regional travel options. One, a big chunk of it goes to TRIMET for their outreach and stuff like that. And finally. And finally, we discussed what happened with Metro and Clackamas County as far as rescinding the, or not extending the period of time for the grant. And that's all I have. So we're done a few minutes early. We'll come back at seven o'clock, take a break and we'll start the regular session of the city council meeting.